I'd like to start by extending a welcome to some members of the North Andover Police Department, Officer Driscoll, Sergeant Staudy, Officer Lynch, Officer Barra, Officer Nagre, Officer Cafrey, and Chief Charles Gray. I'd like to welcome them tonight and ask them if they'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could all stand.
.............................................................................. At this time, I would like to ask that everyone, just for a moment of silence for the tragedies, for the officers, the five officers that were killed in Dallas and the three officers that were killed in Baton Rouge, I'd like to have a moment of silence for one minute to remember those and honor those officers.
Okay, thank you for that. And Officers, Sergeant, Chief, thank you for your service. I'm really very happy to see the residents of this town reaching out to the Police Department, letting you know how much we appreciate and how much we honor your service. And I'm with the board, say anything that they would like.
Obviously, I feel the same way, whether it be police or fire, or the other guys running into the building when everyone else is running out. And it's been a strong presence for the police because of all the tragedies, but again, during riot situations and tough situations, even the fire department is also involved. But we really appreciate everything that you do. But I'd also like to add that prayers for those who are still fighting for their lives and their families.
Absolutely.
And thank you very much for taking care of the people in our town and those who visit us.
I think it says a lot, right? The organic response. You guys are well fed last week in this, right? Whoever does social media caught every single one of those on Facebook, and it says so much about the town that organically everybody just thought, let's just go down there and...
That doesn't come close to the support we got that you saw on social media, but on behalf of everyone standing here, the officers that couldn't make it, and we stand united, just like every other department in the country. And, you know, we're hyper vigilant, but yet we're still maintaining our ethics and standards, and we're going to train even harder and make sure that, you know, if we have a chance to prevent something like that, we're going to.
Chief, if there's anything that you think that the department needs to assist you in this, whether it's equipment, as you said, more training or whatever, please do not hesitate to ask the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager.
Will do. I'll be waiting to hear from the officers on the street and see what they need, and I'll be happy to come back and report to request it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming in tonight. We appreciate your time. Okay, get these crutches out here. Okay. First on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes. We have two meetings, June 20th and June 30th. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm with approval of the minutes for June 20th. Open session as written. And June 30th, open session, minutes as written.
I have a motion from Sergeant Mendeley and a second from Selectmen DeColagero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Meeting minutes are approved. Next on the agenda, two things we really like to do here is, one is welcome new employees, and the other is to say goodbye to retiring employees who obviously have...
I don't think that came out right.
No, 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 because look at the smile on his face. So it's not...
And he's in his shorts and sandals or sneakers.
He should have done it 40 years ago. So we'd like to recognize Gene Willis tonight for his years of service to North Andover. Come on up, Gene. Well, I'll come with it. And for his retirement, and I congratulate him on his retirement, so I'd like to read his certificate of appreciation presented to Eugene Willis for over 10 years of dedicated service to the town as Director of Engineering. Your professionalism, dedication, integrity have been a credit to yourself, the Department of Public Works, and the entire town of North Andover. Thank you on behalf of North Andover, and the best to you in retirement, presented by the North Andover Board of Selectmen, July 8th, 2000. Gene, thank you so much. We admire your service.
I just want to tell you I appreciate the ability to work for the town, my hometown. And I just can't believe that 10 years went by so fast. It was great. It's great to know that the town's still the way it always used to be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
Okay, moving along. Election update from Joyce.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm here this evening to seek a vote for you to open the polls at 6:00 AM for the November 8th election. We normally do this every two years, and it does require a vote from the Board of Selectmen. You may have that further down your agenda.
We do have that on the consent items. If you wanted to give us an update on the current status of the election, then we'll take that under consent.
Okay. What we'll be looking at is, and you can keep it in mind, is we will have early voting for the first time for the November 8th election. We'll have to make decisions closer to the actual time of the election. We don't have regulations yet. They're seeking either to have an alternate additional location to have early voting. Early voting will be different than absentee voting from a procedural point of view. The actual regulations have not been issued by the Secretary of State, probably will not have them until mid-August or closer to September. So what that will do is allow people to actually come vote early. We may have extended hours, if that's a possibility. It'll be dependent on when we move back to Town Hall, because the early voting period starts the 24th of October and ends the 4th of November. So that's going to, you know, factor into what we're going to be able to do for location, because it's separate from the actual office procedure. You'll have different, you'll have somebody located in a different location with a voting list and the early voting ballot. So we'll keep you posted with that, because where we have 19,000 voters, we're going to try to encourage as much absentee voting and as much early voting as possible to be able to handle what we anticipate to be a very high turnout election.
And how are we going to encourage that? Are we going to put some advertising up? We're going to allow...
We'll be doing press releases plus bombarding with information about how it works. So we do have online voter registration now and the ability for the voter to check their status. So we implore people, if you haven't voted before, you haven't voted in a long time, to see, to give us a call or go online. It's very easy. You can actually register now online. It comes directly through to us. Could not be easier. For the presidential primary, we had 290 people register to vote on the last day and had one person come into Town Hall. So it's very effective. We're happy to take your phone calls or your emails to have you check your voter status ahead of time, while we still have time to be able to get you registered. And also an update, we have a September 8th primary election, so that where all the focus is going to be on November, there is going to be a primary election that's a Thursday because of its proximity to Labor Day. So the polls will be open at the high school between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM for the primary. We'll be posting ballots for the primary election on the website as soon as we have them released by the Secretary of the Commonwealth. It's a very, we don't want to say low-key election. You're seeing a lot of candidates on the ballot for Sherrod and some of the other state rep and state senator. There is no opposition on either ballot for some of those candidates. So we'll have them all up there. And the last day to register to vote for that election is Friday on August 19th. And Chief Gray has been very gracious about letting us do voter registration, where it's at Friday from noon to 8:00 PM at the police station, which is a huge help to us, because normally you'd be in the building from noon to 8:00 PM, and he was very gracious to... We did it in the past when we had another election that fell on the special town meeting, it fell on a Saturday. People could go into the police station. We didn't have anybody come, but it was available, so we'll be doing a lot of advertising for that. But that was very, very much appreciated by not having to have any security issues of being in the building till 8 o'clock.
Imagine that cuts down on voter fraud, too, when it's in the police station.
Right.
I'm joking, everyone.
This is a joke.
It's like so serious.
But again, that information will be on...
It's pretty good.
... Cable TV, it'll be in the paper.
Yes.
Probably maybe even a robo-call or two and an email, right?
Absolutely. And we're planning on doing the voter registrations, and I am planning on doing informational things for cable that will not only just explain what the whole process is going to be, but actually walk people through the registration process, how you're going to come into the high school. We're also thinking of maybe having the police do something about traffic patterns of showing people, you know, this is where you're going to come in, this is where you can park on, you know, election day, so that we can get as much information out to the public. And if you have any suggestions for early voting sites or anything like that, just let me know, as we're hoping to finalize some of that and get the word out.
You're anticipating, I presume, in November at least, it's going to be a very busy election?
We could be looking at 90, 95% turnout, and that's a lot of people. We normally, for a presidential election, might have as many as 2,500 absentee ballots, which are different. That's why the early voting was put in place, to try to alleviate having huge lines. And our issue is less about lines inside as traffic outside. So, you know, we'll be working closely with the Police Department and putting as much information out there for people, or if people have, that's why the 6:00 AM opening is a help to commuters, but also people who might not be able to have a flexible schedule to have them, you know, vote early. Early voting is also available by mail, so that the requests can come in and we can mail it out for early voting ballots. There are going to be different standards of what you can do voting early than absentee voting, so we'll try to make sure we pattern it so that whatever somebody's individual needs are. But the biggest thing is double-checking the voter status, because we have plenty of time to help and to guide people. The last thing I want to do on election day is have a lot of people come who have not changed their voter registration status. I mean, if they've moved to North Andover, they're okay, but if they've come from another city or town, and it's not unusual for us to have 700 or 800 people come that have voting issues on election day. So we want to try to eliminate as much of that as possible. We're always, always glad to have people contact us directly, send me an email, or call the office.
Well, I will say that we always appreciate the work that you do, 365 days a year, but this time of year, especially when we have a presidential election and a primary in town, but thank you so much.
Well, you're very welcome. We have lots of help.
Why don't you stay with it? We'll take, I'll take a chairman's prerogative, and I'll move that consent item now so that we can open, we can vote on the 6:00 AM poll opening. So I'm going to just jump down to Consent Item B, if someone would like to make a motion on that one.
Mr. Chairman, motion to move that the Board of Selectmen approve changing the election schedule for November 4th? Nope. Excuse me, November 8th to 6:00 AM, for polls open at 6:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM.
Okay, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sure.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Everyone's okay with that? So the voting hours will be 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM on November 8th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you again. Okay, next on communication announcements, we have a Mass Works grant for downtown improvements. Mr. Tocoi, would you present it?
Thanks for having me. Just wanted to know that I actually connected to this.
No, we couldn't connect. You blocked me out.
All thanks to Christine, who made camp. He was helping to do all that, so. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First of all, I'd like to take it off to him. Let Gene's, oh, Gene left. It's funny, he was just there. I wanted to thank Gene, and he worked very closely, as you know, with the whole division, Community and Economic Development Division. We relied on him heavily and always grateful for his efforts. I'm sorry if I can't hear that. This is, just tee this up, this is really about creating opportunities. Did I jump ahead, or is there...
It's good.
Okay. In the downtown corridor, certainly before even I came on board, there's been a focus, I know of this board and others, to really bring a vibrancy to downtown. We think with this program, and I'll get into that at a high level, we can create opportunities to foster that growth within the downtown and increase investment and truly make it a destination point. We worked, reached out to TEC and introduced Mike Myers from TEC, also Mitch Keen, who's back there, Principal at TEC, to look at ways of what we could do as a town to help spur that development and those investments. And the Commonwealth, and just so you know, TEC's had some pretty good successes. They've had two grants in Burlington, Chelsea, I know Methuen-Haville, they've had some success, also two in Lawrence. I think the latest being what you see going on in Merrimack Street, right near our border, you know, Sutton Street. So we reached out to TEC, walked the area, and really looked for a, things we could do to make this a pedestrian-friendly downtown, a safer downtown. I think what we find, many of us know that the Main Street is really kind of turned into a kind of cut-through, and we see traffic, not zooming, but certainly not slowing up either. So, you know, it was nice to see what Mike and Mitch, the engineers, eyes as to things we could do immediately, frankly, to make a big impact. And that's what Michael will get into today. I want to stress, what you're seeing is, this is really a concept. What you see in the pictures might be elements for discussion further, but this is really relying on TEC's expertise as to what the state's looking for for successful grants, what the street could be, and things we could do to accomplish what we need. That being said, I've had some initial conversations with some people downtown, principally Dave Steinberg at RCG, the East and West Mill, floated this by him. We had actually met with them a few times and some things, very supportive of this plan and of the long-term vision that it contemplates, and is hoping to work toward. We've had some others that also are excited about what you'll see in doing, in concert with the state, what we're proposing is undergrounding the utilities, the lines on Main Street. That was a very high on some people's list, as they thought that was just a great thing, something the town has tried to do and wanted to do for a very long time. We think this is a great opportunity to do that, leverage what we can do, and get some significant investment as well from the Commonwealth. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mike.
Okay. Good evening. I've got a very brief PowerPoint presentation prepared to introduce you to the town's Mass Works application. At TEC, you know, we're looking to support Eric and others from the town over the next six weeks as we advance this application. It's due to the state at the end of August. This first graphic here is something that we can supplement the application with. This is certainly a draft and something we'll advance over the next six weeks. The area in red basically shows the location of the improvements. We're calling them the Main Street Corridor Improvements, from Sutton Street to Water Street, and then a short section of Water Street as well. The two things we're really trying to capture with this graphic as we supplement that application is, we want to show once the improvements are built, again, that area in red, that we can really support economic development, housing opportunities within the town center, which is the area shown in yellow on the graphic, as well as the mills over on High Street, located, or shown in light blue there. The second thing we really like to capture with this is that, once those improvements are in place, that this could open the door for some future potential projects. And on the graphic, we do call the purple shaded areas as planned. We'll change that to potential or something along those lines, as we haven't done a lot of planning. These are more or less ideas, but again, to show that intent, that this project could be a small portion of something greater as we open the doors for other opportunities. These are things that we've found to be something the state likes to see on other successful This slide here essentially shows the Main Street Corridor Improvements at a very high level. We haven't zoomed in here intentionally, because we haven't, we're at such an early stage, we haven't really looked at a lot of the details. Three of the major components I'd like to talk to you are, if you start to the left of the graphic, we'd be looking at a full reconstruction of Main Street at Sutton Street to include a new traffic signal. We'd also look throughout the corridor at opportunities for traffic calming. To Eric's point, you mentioned this is a, can be used as a kind of a cut-through, and we'd look to calm traffic as they come through the corridor in two ways. One, we'd look to reduce lane widths. There's some pretty wide lanes out there, all 15 feet. We'd like to reduce those and see them more like 10, 11 feet. The other way to calm traffic is to make some minor modifications to the curbing out there. At your pedestrian crossings, you can bring the curb in yet a little bit, reduce crossings, make it so pedestrians are more visible to motorists as they approach, and make some minor modifications at intersections. I stress minor, because we have to be mindful of all that on-street parking. If we start to lose on-street parking, we have an impact to businesses, and it's kind of counterproductive of what we're trying to achieve out there with economic development. So we have to be very mindful of that and make sure they're very minor modifications. The third component here is multimodal. It's looking to improve pedestrian, bicycle, and transit. We'd look to reconstruct the sidewalks, look at opportunities for bike lanes, or potentially like a shared lane, and look for opportunities to improve accessibility to the MBRTA line that travels Main Street to the McGovern Station in Lawrence.
Can you say a new traffic signal? There's an existing traffic signal there today.
There is one, yeah. It would be upgraded to include some of the latest technology with vehicular detection and things like that.
Is there enough room to put in a bicycle lane along with traffic going both ways? I just don't, it's quite a struggle as it is right now.
Of course, of course. It's something we would look at in much more detail, just based on early field visits. There's about 15 feet out there for your lane and then your parking lane. So if you went to a 10, 10-foot lane, which is a standard lane width, and it'll actually calm traffic, you could potentially get a 5-foot bike lane. You then do have to, you have that concern with cars going by parked vehicles and things like that, so...
People come and crossing the street where they're getting their coffee and donuts, and they're crossing the street, they're running to the post office, they're running to the hardware store, and they come in between cars. And it's, you have to go slow, you're going to hurt somebody. So I just think I'm concerned about the bike lane.
Yep, a full bike lane would be a challenge and something we would certainly evaluate further. As an alternative, you can provide a shared lane, and it's a particular marking that goes in the road. That just makes motorists aware that they're sharing a lane with bicyclists and vice versa. But it's another way to provide that feature that the state likes to see as part of these improvements.
So the crosswalks?
Yes.
We have existing crosswalks there today. Are any of those crosswalks going to allow us to have more parking spaces, or are they going to take parking spaces away?
We would try to retain the existing crossings that are there today, where the vehicles aren't being, where the vehicles aren't parking.
Right.
So that's why I stress there'd be minor modifications at those crossings, and then as well as, excuse me, other intersections. At a place like Water in Maine, as you come heading northbound on Main Street into downtown, it's very wide in that area. So two alternate, two things we could look at is, one, bring the curb lines in, or you can barely see on that plan, there's a pedestrian refuge island that you could propose in the center there to provide a refuge for pedestrians to cross one lane at a time, and then also kind of constrict that entrance into Main Street, provide some calming.
Next one.
Have you considered, because we've talked about this in the past, and I know it's kind of a big goal, but we do have a river right nearby.
Mm-hmm.
And even behind on Saunders Street, there's also another waterway that we've always talked about, opening that up so that restaurants overlooking the water, or a small marina, or is there any way we could incorporate any of that into this, or is that just...
Well, in the first phase, not necessarily, but that's why we created that kind of wider vision. If you go back to...
Yeah, I saw a little bit of it.
Right.
So just to sort of talk about this briefly, this is multiple phases. The grant that Eric's speaking about, Eric's speaking about, there is...
Projected to cost of...
Upward, between two and a half to three and a half million.
And what the state likes to see is...
We're not having a waterway project.
No. There's no commuter boat coming. But what the season abroad a project, as it continues to be improved development along Main Street and onto the mills there, and the possibility of connecting back to Sutton, we hear a lot of feedback from developers who would like to have us provide greater access to Sutton Street through other, connecting it to downtown to improve the possibility of development there. We see is that Sutton Street piece, Selectmen Smidely, in the green area there and toward the yellow, we see is that that goes to highest and best value, and there's improvement in that area. There'll be a natural progression toward the waterfront. Eric's actually walked the waterfront from down in the site back to Osgood.
Right.
I'm not sure what clothes he wore, but walked in that direction. So Eric has been a champion for trying to connect the waterway back to the business district, and I think there's some opportunity.
There is also, just before you get to the, to go onto 495 North, there is a big, open, green area that probably the state owns that...
I believe they do.
DPW is working on that with Selectmen Watson regarding some improvements down there, with some private citizens, and Terry Hall is involved.
Yeah.
We're also putting a gateway sign there.
Yeah.
Because Watson's been working toward making some of those steps to do that. We've gotten some agreement from the state, private transit company that operates the T, as well as the state, that we can make some steps there and there. So we've cleaned up some, they're cleaning up some, and there's going to be a gateway sign placed there. Selectmen Watson can probably speak to it better, but she's been working with the Director of Public Works and several others to improve that.
Yeah, I was actually talking more to, as a location, to maybe get out onto the water.
Oh, so yeah.
Oh, from an access point?
Yeah. When you go by there, it's to the right, and it's a pretty big piece of...
Yeah, great idea. Yeah, off to the sort of left side in the middle of the screen, where the arrow is?
It's pretty close to, just before you get on to the highway. You'll, you'll go down this.
I think that is it.
If it enhances the application, we certainly have an interest to look at the prospect of bringing in the waterfront.
And that is one of the, thinking forward, enhancing both, was it Sutton Pond and Osgood Pond. We know RCG and the developers, they are really interested in that. We'll see that potential kind of access around the pond. We think that whole area is ripe for that, and look for other programs to do that as well. We like that, and we haven't added everything on to this yet, but you'll see the arrow, and it refers to the McGovern Transportation Center.
Yeah.
Also, as you can see, we go a little further on, try and reconfigure the High Street, Sutton Street intersection, that's still confusing to me each time I go to it.
Why, it's called an Elman High.
But, you know, this builds on getting from the McGovern Center to the airport, to, you know, our downtown destination. The state has already vested, invested heavily on that corridor, and we think this builds on that, and that's a good argument with the state. It's a next stone, a stepping stone, you know, progressing into the region. It's a nice regional touch, too. So we are looking certainly to access the Merrimack River. I'd love to access that river.
We've all been talking about it, I've been talking about it for years, but it is expensive and it does, and probably acquiring private property in order to really make it work, and that's the big part of it.
Yeah, do you see the green space that you...
You see it. It's a pretty good-sized space, and it's fairly flat.
You can sort of see it to the arrow, just north of the arrow.
Yeah.
Yep, that's a good point.
Go back to the...
Yeah, go to that existing one. This was a picture we took, this is Main... This is Main Street, heading south, you've got Waverly just over to the right there. Three things that really kind of stood out here, one is the abundance of those overhead utilities that you guys have downtown. And with this, this project and fully reconstructing the road, it does provide that opportunity to bury them under Main Street. The second thing that's captured here is you see the car heading towards us. You've got a fairly wide lane there. I did measure that lane, and it's about 15 feet, so you could add an edge line there to narrow that up a little bit, and make it so motors aren't so comfortable in that wider lane. The more comfortable motors is, the faster they're gonna drive within that lane. And then the third thing is, is it kind of captures the potential for a nice little gateway entrance into the downtown area. And this last slide essentially shows that vision of, you know, multimodal safety improvements that would support retaining and creating jobs, housing opportunities, and all located in the town center are three key elements that we're hopeful makes this a very strong candidate for you guys.
I don't see Selecton Stewart's vehicle in front of the coffee shop.
That's what we might know.
He parks a little further back.
We got rid of the manhole covers. It's part of the ground. I like that, that was a good catch.
I mean, I love the clean look of it without the wires. I also love the fact that the Today View has gray skies, and the New View has...
I'm missing a flag on that light pole.
Oh, jeez. A wreath, missing a wreath.
We need snow for the... How far along the corridor do you see eliminating the telephone poles and adding the heirloom lighting?
Well, we separated from the grant, because it's the sort of town piece versus grant piece.
Right.
We have approval to go from Merrimack Street down to Sutton Street, as part of a previous vote by town meeting. What we did was, Ray and I came back to the board and indicated that now that the Old Center project had been completed and paid for, before we were, we wanted to come back with a comprehensive Main Street corridor project, before we asked the board to stop the process again in terms of the undergrounding. But it's our perspective that if we're gonna transform Main Street, we're gonna need to, that's not gonna be part of the grant, that's our sort of participation, that we're gonna have to underground the wires. And I would recommend, since the approval exists, to go as far back as Merrimack Street, further up Main Street. We do the whole kit and caboodle. We go from Merrimack Street, further up Main Street, all the way to Sutton Street, and I think it includes the first hundred or so feet on First and Second. So you're gonna underground, well, all the way, first 100 feet in Waverly, I think? So from Sutton Street, really all the way back to Merrimack, and about 100 feet down the major side streets, Waverly, First, Second.
How much is that total project?
We've got estimates, but, you know, Ray can speak to his experiences and whip marks from the process, and we've gotten some rough numbers projected to the board. It was $4 million we got from NGRIB, but until you start a process, you really don't know. The engineering starts, and they start to tell you what the number is. But again, that's the additional dollars added to the individual utility bills that have been ongoing now for a period of time.
Right.
Yep. But we've talked to a couple of developers, Eric and I as well, major developers in town, and they indicate that they believe that with all these other improvements, that that really is the tipping point. Changing the visual landscape is essential to changing Main Street's perspective. That's for another meeting.
That's been a great update, and really encouraging, and very, very interesting concept. Thank you for all the efforts. So the grant, the application goes in the end of August, and then when will we know if it's been approved for that?
October.
Yeah, October.
That's gonna be quick.
Last week of October.
Great. So should we plan on having you back sometime in that timeframe, an update on the...
Sure. On the final, yeah, sure.
Absolutely.
Is there anything you need from us? Letters of support, letters from the citizens, contacting any of our officials? Is that all part of what needs to be done?
All of the...
Yep. The support's definitely very helpful.
We'll call Joey.
Just reach out.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I plug you for one item that's coming up on your agenda? And it's Consent Item F. We got it 2302 Turnpike Street. And if you want, I'll stick around, but I was just wondering, that's a license agreement, real quick, for the developments, earthworks, redevelopment of that corner. This is something that Town Council has signed off on, DPW Conservation Planning has all signed off on. It's really, Chappens Pond has 150-foot wide right away.
Right.
From way back days, because of the missile, the silo. The road's only 75 feet, so 75 feet goes in, and it seemed really ridiculous to have this nice development that's going in, and have that 75-foot kind of gap. Also, the runoff from Sutton Street, this is all to create what they call rain garden to handle the runoff.
You mean from Turnpike Street?
No, this is from Sutton's, I mean, Chappens Pond.
Oh, I was gonna say Sutton.
Sutton, I'm sorry, I said Chappens. I saw the, this is Chappens Pond.
This is the project at the corner of Chappens Pond Road and Turnpike?
It's a big hole right now.
So let's just take a step back. So you're asking us to move this item up in the...
Or just, I wanted to...
You're giving us an overview of it right now?
Right.
I know there was a question of whether or not the attorney for the applicant could be here.
She was planning on coming. Frankly, I said if she could make it, that'd be great. She's trying to get here, and I do know that, so if you wanna wait, that's fine. She is supposedly coming, if you wanna talk to her.
But if you have any questions on it, that's why Ray and Eric ask you. Are there any questions about the license? So it's been approved by Town Council, the Conservation Commission, and the Planning Board.
And they'll, so they'll clear it, construct it, and they'll maintain it, earthworks. But it's on, obviously, it's on that right way.
So I can certainly, since you're sitting there in the chair, can certainly take this one out of order, if you'd like. We can take it out of order. Are there any questions or any comments from the board on this, that they'd like further clarification on? I have the license agreement here in my hand. I think everyone might...
How's it going to look when it's finished?
Rain garden's gonna look pretty good.
Is it?
Yeah.
They forwarded electronic up there, I see they can look here.
You know, it's kind of ornamental grasses and low...
Yeah.
Yellow. Yeah. I think that whole corner's gonna obviously be transformed, but, you know...
Yeah, it's been kind of good days with it.
I think they're gonna do a great job there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm willing to take this out of order, if somebody would like to make a motion?
Move to take it out of order? Is that the motion you want?
No, I'm already taking, I'm using my prerogative to take it out of order. I mean, make a motion for, on what you'd like to do with this item, approve?
It's at the very end, right?
It's, yeah, it's Item under F, under Consent Items F, Item F.
C, D, E, F. Move that the board of Selecton approve and sign the license agreement between the Town of North Andover and Gill Family LLC as presented this evening.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second on this?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Stuart, any further discussion on this? Anybody? Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Tell them to make it look nice, it is one of our gateways as well.
I think they're actually here, right?
That's right, okay. It almost looks like a Japanese garden.
Do we need someone?
Anybody wanna see it?
Joyce, can you authorize this?
No, we'll take care of that.
No, we'll take care of that.
Okay, so I'm gonna sign it, so we'll just...
No, it does, it looks like a beautiful Japanese garden or something.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. So let's jump back into order. So we'll move to Consent Items, we've already moved two of them. So we're gonna go back, and we're going to discuss the warrant for September 8th, the 2016 primary. Please.
Mr. Chairman, I just need signatures from the board of Selecton, so we can have it posted.
Okay. So we don't need a motion on this one?
Yes, you do.
We didn't motion, okay. If we could get a motion on this one?
Move to adopt the warrant is presented by Madam Clerk. Is that good enough, or...
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll sign that. Do we have multiple copies we need to sign, or is...
Right here, two copies coming around.
So is this also copied, or is this... So four copies altogether?
Just one of those.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Do you want some signatures, nevermind.
I'm just listening to Madam Clerk.
All right, so this may go on a couple times. Okay, while we're finishing that up, the next under Consent Items is a request from Alex Coakley of the North Andover Athletic Association to use the streets in North Andover for the sixth annual Knights on the Run Road Race, September, October 27, 2016. Do I have, let's see, let me just take a quick look at this item. We have positive consent from the Division of Public Works, and I don't see...
Police and Fire have all approved and no condition.
Police and Fire approve, no condition, oh yeah, that's right.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board of Selecton approve the request of the North Andover Athletic Association to use streets in North Andover for a 5K road race Saturday, October 27, 2016, beginning at 9:30 a.m., as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
There's nobody here to speak to it, to advertise for it?
No, this is always a very well-attended event. It raises money for a very good cause, the North Andover Athletic Association. They usually get a good number of runners, and it's usually a very fun event. They have a lot of vendors and everything else at the high school as well. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is appointments to some committees and boards in town. The first on the list is Nadine and Ken Delano as the poet laureate, and it looks like there'll be a team now. Where before we had Kathy Klein as our, Karen Klein, I'm sorry, as our poet laureate, now we have a team. So anybody wanna speak to this?
I think it's great. Are you each gonna take one year? Because it's a two-year term, is that how we're gonna do it? No, I'm teasing. That's great.
No, we thought maybe if we, if we did it, you know, he took two years, and I took two years, and he took two, we could keep it for eight years.
There you go, there you go.
We're just kidding.
No, it's fine.
I think it's fun. I mean, this is what it's all supposed to be, it's supposed to introduce poetry and make it fun, and, and it's great. I think a team is terrific.
They're great performance artists, and we haven't had performance artists as a pair ever, ever here. It's wonderful.
And I'd like to say that the poet laureate committee voted unanimously to put their name forward to the board of Selecton.
Great.
We've been very pleased. They do community service right now, on Tuesdays every month, they have an open microphone at the Stevens Memorial Library. So they've been encouraging poetry in North Andover for several years now, and we're just delighted to have the opportunity to recognize their work, and then to recommend them for being the cheer people for the town going forward as poets laureate.
That's great.
I think it's a testament to Karen Klein that we need two people to replace her, so, who served us for four years as poet laureate with distinction, so I'm excited. I'm excited that we have such an active group locally, but thank you, Karen, because I know that, you know, you've been relentless in making this program the success that it is.
I bug you all the time about it.
And every time I say, "I am not a poet, but I appreciate what you do," and, you know, we've seen events at the library where you have truly packed the entire event, so...
He's the one that bug.
He's the one that bug, that's good, that's...
Yeah.
She's pointing to Dick.
No, she is not. But you are more than welcome to bug me, though, if you'd like to...
They're all very supportive, everybody's supportive, even the ones who aren't here.
No, that's true.
Okay, so do we have a motion for the appointment?
Move approval of our dynamic duo poet laureates.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much for your upcoming service, and Karen, thank you for your services last few, so many years. Okay, and next up, Christina Russell to the Youth and Recreation Council.
So Rosemary and myself, we had the chance to sit down with Christina several weeks ago, absolutely motivated to get involved. She's newer to town, but is somebody who has a background with education, has a background with education. And so that, plus being a mother of a younger child, we thought that she would add, you know, some great perspective, but also she had the enthusiasm and interest to see a vibrant youth and rec program in town. So, and I think I saw her back, right over there, so I don't defer to the chairman, if you'd like to, you know, put you in the hot seat to talk, you know, say anything, but she was, it was a great interview and a great conversation that we got to have with her, so...
Sure, you're more than welcome to introduce yourself if you want, or if you don't have to, you don't want to, you don't have to, that's fine. But we'd just like to thank you for stepping up and serving the town in this, in this capacity. We really appreciate all the citizens and everyone that steps up and does this from this board to every, every board and committee in town, so thank you. So I'll hear a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New citizen in town, too, not here too long.
Yes, thank you for getting involved so quickly. And next, we have Carrie Wahlberg on the Cultural Council and Sustainability Committee, so that's two different committees that they'll be, she will be involved in.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, she was very excited to serve, and had a lot of energy, and was willing to take on two committees, and I think it's great. So I would move approval for her as well.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second that.
Is Carrie here tonight?
No.
So she, she comes to us by way of California originally, and so she brought a lot of, she brought a really unique perspective, I thought, specifically to the Sustainability Committee, and I think that they'll be very happy. And we always toss members their way, and they seem, they seem thrilled to have the bodies, so, felt like her.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we have Tracy Watson, onto our Community Preservation Committee. Tracy is not here tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest we hold this issue here.
So we have a motion to table this until Selecton Watson is here?
I would agree with that.
I haven't, I haven't got the, I mean, I, the first I seen, this is in my packet, I wanted to talk to her and see what's going on, I just...
Okay, well, that's fair. So you, there's a motion to put it, table it for tonight?
Yeah.
Are you seconding that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? I think, given Selecton Stewart's intent to speak with her about this, we'll take a vote on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so we'll table this one until Selecton Watson is available to be here. If she comes tonight, we can always...
Well, the intention of that was not, was to speak with her at a public meeting, or to, you just wanted to speak to her about, are we, are we putting her in that, in that role where she would come before us, and then, if we don't typically require appointments?
I wanna talk to her and see where she was on this, I've been, I've been, I've had talked to people of certain things, I have to get some questions answered, it's just like... Right here, did this, how many, how many votes do you need to put it on?
Well, I just want to make sure that people know that you don't, it's not typically expected, it was more of a coincidence that some of the appointments were here this evening and we offered that they wanted to come up, but typically it's not expected that an appointment, if anybody's interested in coming and joining a board, that you have to come and sit at, you know, a meeting and be on TV. So, I just, that's why I wanted the clarification that.
Well, it sounds like Mrs. Stewart wants to talk to her about, yeah, so we've already voted, so we've voted to table this one. So we'll take this up at our next meeting on the 15th of August, so we'll table it till the 15th. Next appointment is Joseph Lynch to the Conservation Commission.
I would move approval of Joe Lynch. He's a valuable member of that commission.
And a veteran member of that commission.
Tremendous amount of knowledge, so.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda we have consent item for request of the North Andover Booster Club Little League for permission to install two scoreboards at Carl Thomas and to accept the donation of the scoreboards, which I believe is from-
From the chairman, from our board members?
Who your friends are.
He's just put a brief face.
I unfortunately do not have a PowerPoint presentation.
That's all right. I know everything there is to know about installing one of those.
But if you could just introduce yourself for the-
Yes. I am Rick Green, representing North Andover Booster Club Little League. I am the fields coordinator. I've been a part of the league for about probably 14 years now, so these are typically the projects I handle. Ed Lynch is in the audience, he's a board member. He's responsible for the fundraising. We're able to scale the funds from Commonwealth Motors for these actual scoreboards. He played a major role in this. I'll just start off by telling you what's there. Most of you probably already know that, even from the area with the Cal Thomas complex, but there are two existing scoreboards on the field. There is one in Carl Thomas Upper, which is the field that borders Dana Street, many office park. There is also one down in Carl Thomas Lower, or Carl Thomas Two, which borders Mass Ave. The one up on Carl Thomas One, at one point, before my time, did have lights, did have power to it. There is still bioconduit to it, but that conduit was cut off at some time. There was a lighting control that was probably removed about 10 years ago, so there is, for all intents and purposes, there is no power to that scoreboard at this time. The scoreboard that's existing in Carl Thomas Lower has no power to it. That is just a manual scoreboard that's supported by a couple of six-by-six pressure-treated timers. The scoreboard up on Carl Thomas One is supported by four-by-four tube steel, it's in a concrete footing and it's about 15 feet high. What we're proposing here is to install two new scoreboards, they'll be roughly 15 foot nine inches tall, so very similar to the one that's up in Carl Thomas Upper. The location of the scoreboards would be pretty much the same. The only thing that may shift a little bit is for the solar panels. We did a cost comparison and to install new conduit and power to the existing score, to the existing scoreboard location and a new one down at Carl Thomas was cost prohibitive. So, we've gone in an environmentally friendly way with solar powered scoreboards. So, as you can see in the packet it was passed out to you, it'll have a sponsor sign for Commonwealth Motors on top of the scoreboard itself. So the scoreboard itself is roughly about 14 foot six inches high and you have the 21-inch advertising banner on top of it, brings you to about 15 foot nine. So that's what we propose, these scoreboards would operate by remote control and solar power. There'd be two solar panels on each scoreboard, which would provide the power and there's one, I think it's an 80 amp hour battery, that would be stored in a battery box that's attached to the scoreboard pole. So really, there's nothing to run down there in terms of conduit or anything like that. It's all localized construction. And what we're proposing to do is, we're going to do that with volunteer labor, which will be supervised under myself.
So you're, are you talking about from the ground? It's like 14, 15 feet?
Yes.
So about maybe as tall as this inner ceiling here, maybe, maybe a little-
A little bit taller than that, yeah.
And thank you for supervising that, and I know you have a lot of experience in there, but it'll also be under, it'll also be permitted by the town as well.
I've already talked to Dawn about that and it'll be my construction supervisor's license that'll confirm it. So we'll, we'll go through the billing framework application and I've got lots of access to equipment, so.
Now, does this go dark when the kids are not playing?
Yes.
Okay.
So the last inning, we don't start an inning after 7:45, so we're done by eight. Quarter past eight is the latest and that's only from April, so pretty much the end of July, when the tournament, when the SUCI tournament ends, that's pretty much it for the season. There is a fall league, but that's really only on Saturdays, so there should be no effect on, on the abut as I mean, this in terms of lighting being an issue.
I have to tell you, I don't think you've heard me, this is the most comprehensive report that I've seen. I know how to build and install these big signs.
Wait till the next one, I can move on from the, in the gap accessibility.
Jumbotron. I think it's very exciting, how exciting for the kids and what a lot of work for both of you to raise the money and, this is, this is a lot. If people saw how much work has gone into just-
There's going to be a lot of effort to construct it, but we'll be on time.
It's great. Fun.
Well, it absolutely is comprehensive and all the more impressive when you consider that, you know, it's really, you know, an organization run by volunteers and will enhance, I think, our children's athletic experiences, so. I'd actually like the request of Mr. Chairman through you and to the members that we waive the fees associated with this. A motion that we waive the fees associated with this.
I'll second it.
Stewart.
Okay, so let's, let's take the entire motion then. So we have to, we have to also approve the installation of the scoreboards and accept the donation. Do we want to take those separately?
So moved.
So moved, okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, so we were, we're moving the installation, waiving of the building fees and accepting the donation from Commonwealths, all in one motion.
You're actually accepting the donation from the Booster Club.
Oh, it's the Booster, I'm sorry, from the Booster Club, thank you.
Does that include dinner and drink or?
So, alright, so we have a motion.
I'll buy you a hot dog at the stand.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Green, let me just say again to you, thank you. You're one of those behind-the-scenes people that does so much for this town and I don't know that a lot of people know your face or know that you, how much you do with respect to the field and keeping everything on track, so thank you for all you do.
Is that, is that scoreboard there another one was there in 1950?
Your name's still on it.
It's going in your backyard. We're going to hang a uniform.
Let's just say it was out of commission when I started doing it, probably 15 years ago.
You know that uniform you have from the 50s with the mustard stain on it?
Yeah, I'll show you.
All those in favor?
The little ones.
Aye, opposed? All set, thank you.
Thank you both very much and thanks for the committee.
Thanks for it.
For the club.
You should get more sun.
I've been at the booth for a couple of days. Alright, next on the agenda is the, whether we will waive our right of first refusal for the affordable unit resale of 200 Chicken Road, Unit 107A, Kittredge Crossing. Do I have a motion?
We have never exercised a-
The board has always taken the action of refusing the right of first refusal on the affordable unit.
Move that the Board of Selectmen decline the right of first refusal to purchase the affordable housing unit at 200 Chicken Road, Unit 107A, also known as Kittredge Crossing.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up, we're going to accept a donation from Lowell Five Cent Savings Bank in the amount of $5,000 for the Fourth of July fireworks display. Do we have any here from Lowell Five? And if we do, I apologize, I would have taken this a lot sooner. No, we don't. So, do we have a motion? Again, a very great town partner, Lowell Five Cent Savings Bank, they came into the town recently and they've been nothing but a great partner to us.
Do we, do we send them a thank you note every time?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do, and we will, we'll make sure-
We send a request for the money first, get the money.
No, send, send the thank you note first and you get it faster.
No, they agree.
And what's the total cost of the fireworks?
About $10,000, isn't it?
Just sell for that. Each year goes up, so this year it's probably about 11. 10, 5, 11, somewhere in that area.
We had a big offset from the Friends of the Senior Center too, they donated a large chunk of money for the fireworks.
And they were great this year, so.
Okay, so we have, do we have a motion?
Move that the board accept the donation of $5,000 from Lowell Five Cent Savings Bank to be used towards the Fourth of July fireworks display.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Again, thank you to Lowell Five Cent Savings Bank, we'll be sending out a thank you letter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, request of surplus vehicles and equipment from DPW. Mr. Manager, did you want to say anything on that?
Yeah, this was a request made by DPW Director Bruce Thibodeau for a couple of pieces of equipment that are identified on the tax sheet. There's an 04 Trailblazer that has certainly served the town well, 1995 Chevy, piece of heavy equipment actually, vehicle 34. The Johnson Sweeper, as we proceed with purchasing, new sweeper. 2005 Silverado, 2006 Ferris, which is a mower, we're replacing those mowers, and a 2008 Kubota mower, as well, mower as well as we're upgrading our mowers.
And the 2008 is actually going to be, going to the school department?
Correct.
So when we make this vote, that, if we approve this, that will go to the school department?
We surplus at the school then accepts the donation on the other side.
Okay.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve design of, excuse me, approve the request of DPW Director Bruce Thibodeau to surplus the equipment and vehicles as per his memorandum to the town manager dated July 13, 2016.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion seconded, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, last under consent items, we have the new design of the DPW building or the addition, I'm sorry, not the new design, the addition to the DPW building. The DPW is looking for approval for this so that they can move forward there. I believe they have another meeting with the planning board or the zoning board, one of, zoning board.
Zoning board is the only one left.
So they have another meeting with the zoning board and they would like direction from this board with respect to that project. So, we've talked about this a couple of times, we've discussed the paint, the color in the picture that is presented to us is not the actual color, that was just a present, demo color.
Mr. Chairman, could I say something?
You absolutely can.
We're being asked to approve this, this project. I, I mean, none of the selectmen were ever involved in this process. I feel uncomfortable approving something I have no idea what's in that building. I, I think we should have, you know, I think should at least one last one, selectmen who's involved on these projects, because, you know, this is like a rubber stamp deal, you know, but I have no idea if there's something in there I don't like, but it doesn't matter, just, we're just here to rubber stamp it. I think going, going forward that we should have someone from the Board of Selectmen-
So when you say you're uncomfortable with what's going in, you mean the, the space in terms of space of the building?
We're approving this project, right? I have no idea what's in there. You know, I have no idea what's in there. It's like, it's like, like me pulling something out and say approve this, you don't know what's in this. I mean, I just, I know, it, tell you, I'm not, I'm not that real fussy about it, but I think we should have a little bit more input as far as what's going on, on a lot of these projects, you know, or at least have one, one, one selectman who understands what's going on.
Okay, so we have, so that's a go-forward strategy, right?
Is that possible?
At this point, we're in-
We're the executive board, of course it's possible.
Yes, it is possible. At this point, we're in, we're in a position where we've got a project that's in the works.
Yeah. I mean, this one's open now, I mean, it's no, you know, just, it just has to be funny that you go to approve something you don't really know.
Well, what happened was at our last meeting, this was just put and say, "Okay, you guys got to do this because it's going before the other boards." And I think every single member was somewhat troubled by the fact that, "What are you, what are you talking about? What do you mean?" And then to find out that we don't have, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we were told that we don't even have enough paint, money to cover the painting of the entire building, we can't fix the garage doors at this present time, but it's a $4 million project that the public and the Board of Selectmen should be made aware of and what's going on, we should, it's just troubling that that's how this was presented to us.
I was not at the last meeting, but it was presented to you that the project, first of all, I think that's in fairness to both Mr. Stewart and Mr. Miller, the idea that you're not, did not have access to the materials or there wasn't a level of communication within the facility, I think is not fair. It was not the first time it was brought up in terms of discussion, this building. We've worked for the same program now for 40 years. We have working groups, typically people who live and work in the building, helping decide what the interior is, typically on the exterior facade, Town Hall being a great example, certain publics in particular because it's a historic town and a sort of center of its community, that was more on the exterior, not on the individual makeup of the individual offices and who sat where, quite frankly. This is a functional building of the existing staff. The entire building is going to be painted, we've talked about that. This was, has always been as a programmatic item for the five years, we've been talking about the facility plan. This has always been about creating an office space which addresses the existing weaknesses or deficiencies within a building, where you have professional staff sitting in a building that was probably not designed for the professional staff, not in a quality question, but in terms of if you've ever been in the DPW facility, it just lacks what you'd expect to walk into a professional space and allow folks to operate in a professional manner. This project was always about creating that space for them and making perimeter improvements to a building which is, you know, old and tired. We've said and have communicated at other meetings that if you want a full brand new DPW facility, it's 30 million bucks. But that isn't the project that was ever presented either originally by the Facility Master Plan before my arrival, or since then, this has been a project about creating that professional space and making perimeter improvements because aesthetically it's, it's not greater than Ahab in fairness, and we all recognize that. As it relates to your involvement, I both understand your perspective and at the same time, I think the belief that this hasn't had been an inclusive process, it has and it's been, not unlike the other processes, where staff and other members of the people that you pay every day to do the work of the town, sit in a meeting and try to decide over multiple meetings with professionals, how to arrange the office space. I mean, in fairness, I don't sit in some of those meetings because I'm not going to dictate to the DPW director, "You need to sit here for a stair." We let the staff and the engineers work on that to come up to something that creates the best workspace. I understand the exterior pieces and all the concerns, whether you like the building or the color, I get that piece. As it relates to this facility, does a particular selectman or a particular town manager add a value to what the office space should operate, or is that more likely that the opinion and input of those people who work in that facility provide the proper perspective of how they work?
You know, I, I agree with you in part, but not in total. This is still the people's building. And unlike what the discussion that we had at the Town Hall and we looked at different renderings, this is the executive board, we should be at least informed along the way. This is what they're doing, just let us know. I agree with you. I don't, I really don't desire, and it's a utility building, I do not have the knowledge of where we park all our heavy equipment, the type of rubber flooring or whatever it is that's involved. I don't have that, but it's just being kept informed. So at the end of a meeting, this is what we're doing on the DPW, but it's, but also too, I don't think it's too much to ask to at least have a citizen that's not a town employee just sitting in, who might have some expertise in this area. I don't think our town employees should be designing all of our buildings without at least letting the executive board know, "How's it going? What are our thoughts? Money-wise, are we, you know, under budget, over budget? Are there shortcomings because we don't have enough money?" It's just keeping us informed, Andrew. This board, and I think I can speak for the entire board because every single person went, "What? What?"
Well, I prefer to hear from each of you because that's not what I'm hearing individually. So if that's the case, the executive board, I think that the level of communication-
If you watch the meeting-
And I didn't have the benefit of doing that, but I also-
I think you can, I think you can see, let me finish please.
Well, but you-
I think, I think you can see that there was a little bit of, wow, where did this come from?
I, I want to, I did not empower any selectman to speak on my behalf. This is, I, I said this to Ray after the meeting, that was not, I don't know why people said that was the first time they saw this, because it wasn't my first time at a public meeting seeing this. It was earlier this winter, this, this same photo was in a packet that we had. I'm going to be frank and I've had conversations with people in the public because it's a DPW building, you've already laid it out, you've laid it out as well, that it's, it's not on Main Street, it's not a historic building. I mean, do I think it could be prettier? Yes, but my definition of pretty is, we learned during the debate about the exterior of Town Hall is different from the four, my four colleagues, as are their opinions from the other four. I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on paint color. I appreciate, I think Ray did actually a really good job of explaining how we have $4 million to work with to bring this building up to a level that allows our professional staff to act as professional staff and deliver the best services to our residents. I do think that we as a board collectively, so I guess I would, I don't disagree with the sentiment, I agree with Selectman Stewart's sentiments, but not with how he would deliver them. I think that, yeah, if it could be brought to the board more regularly, that would be helpful, but I wasn't surprised that this was a project happening and it wasn't a new picture to me. I mean, it was brought to us, I mean, I may be wrong with the date, but January, February, this was a photo that was given to us. this was a photo that was given to us. I don't know that I expected you, I mean, I, I don't know that I expected the same type of input that we had with the, with North Andover Town Hall, but then again, I mean, I didn't ask about that. And clearly it's something that does matter to, you know, to some colleagues and future boards of selectmen may want that type of input, so, I mean, I don't know if that was in our budget, though they get multiple designs. I mean, that's, that's, that's not something I remember discussing last week.
Well, assuming what I would say is this, that I will take the responsibility that it relates to all of the projects that we're doing. And I do think, and I can go back and show you 50, 150 emails and other communications about the Facility Master Plan, including town meeting presentations and everything else. This has not been a process that has not been inclusive period, in my opinion. That being said, I can say as it relates to this project, and Ray can probably confirm my position on it, I viewed this as a utilitarian addition, some kind of quasi-perfrontal, oh my God, look at the building, it needs to be improved. And I didn't, I certainly didn't raise it to the same level as, not even near the same level as town hall, for example. Or even this building to an example. Because from our perspective, we have regularly since for the last five years communicated that what 4 million-ish gets you in this particular case, isn't the kind of transformative improvements that you see at town hall or the creation of this building. It really was about creating a proper work environment. I know it's a public building, but in fairness, it doesn't get the same throughput and activity. It's not a place we're going to bring one of these meetings to.
It's not the library or town hall or the school, I agree with you.
So I would agree, certainly to the extent that, that we, including myself, went into this project as viewing it as a little more routine, but it wasn't the first time you saw these photos.
No, I agree with you on that.
I felt that that was communicated, so I want to be clear about that. It wasn't the first time, but we certainly entered this as, as more of a, almost something that wasn't in the plan, just something that we were doing as part of a capital project. And so from that perspective, having the functional staff make those decisions, I, with no disrespect to the remarkably intelligent members of our community or to the same to the Board of Selectmen, the folks who live and work in this kind of building, they do represent the folks who, who should be driving those kinds of decisions. As it relates to the aesthetic appeal, I think that the architect, quite frankly, was limited. Look to the building to the left and the building to the right. And we both recognized, it's not a criticism of those buildings, but they are straight-line buildings of metal construction, one has a little bit of stone, one's just red. And, and to a certain extent, I, I don't blame the architect at all and, or the group for coming back with the structure, which largely is consistent with the other two buildings, left and right of the facility. So I, I do think we approach this project a little differently. I certainly say that, and if that left the impression of exclusion or being left out, okay.
Can I weigh in here too? I haven't had a chance to weigh in here. So what I would say is, yes, the last meeting, we saw this, the drawings, there were some questions about the color, there were some questions about the location on the plot, where it was going to sit. So I think those questions were answered at the last meeting. The color, we understood then, this was just a picture. We understood now where the, where the building is going to sit on the, on the property. I think going forward, we used to have a frequent update from Ray on the, on the building plan, on the capital plan. I think going forward, I'd like to put that as, as an agenda item, maybe under the town manager report, just so we get that regular update, so we don't feel that we're, you know, we're blindsided by something like this, so we can have that regular update. And so, and just on every project that's ongoing, I think that was a good update that we used to get from Ray, and I think that would be something that I'd like to put back under the town manager's report, just so we can have that regular update and make sure we're communicating and understanding what's happening.
During the construction of this building, too, I appreciated the tour by Ray through the building to see how it was coming and get a better idea of what it knew, and this would be involved.
Again, I'm going to be a little defensive here, Mr. Stewart. What was said left, in my opinion, the wrong impression, and I don't want it to be left that way. This board has been communicated with, at, in my opinion, at least an acceptable level, if not above, around what is $25 million a project. It has been the most spoken about series of activities short of our effort toward the bottom rating during my entire tenure. So as it relates to this one, I will accept the fact that we approach it in a completely different way. We just didn't view the building as, I mean, that's, well, if that's a fault, that's a fault. And I think it's a fair point to bring up regular capital improvements.
It was more of an update rather than a complaint.
Right, but as it relates to the sort of look of the project, what was designed, I think Ray articulated this as he communicated to me, I'm sure he did, this was a remarkably limited site in which what you see in front of you is what's left on the site. This wasn't options and choices here. You had to fix a box of several thousand square feet on a site and meet conservation restrictions, setbacks on the zoning requirements, lot coverage requirements, and so the architect had a rather challenging job as did the committee. But I, but I think overall, I, I will take exception if the belief is that I do not communicate effectively. I'm just going to leave it like that. If it's about this project, I'll take the hit. If it's a broader common, I won't.
So that we've, we've agreed, so that it would be all projects, not just this? I mean, we also have a big field projects going on that I would like some of these on.
And I gave an update to the fields project, we have, we don't, again, I will give you any information you want, I just, but there's got to be reasonable expectation of where we sit. So the fields project doesn't really exist today. It's a 50, we spend on an annual basis, we put in about 20 capital project requests, plus that's a CPC request, and another seven or eight, nine CPC requests. Do you want updates at every meeting on 17 projects?
No, I would think anything that, you know, a brief update, anything that's ongoing, town hall, let's have an update on town hall, anything that's coming up in the next, I don't know, two, three months, maybe?
Of what nature? Equipment purchases as well as facility...
I don't think there's any harm in just letting us know.
No, no, I'm just trying to, I want to make sure that we're giving you the exact...
My thought was around building projects and, and fields, any construction, anything we put a shovel in the ground.
Well, the big project that's going on at the middle school, I'm actually hearing from neighbors what's going on there. That's, that's the kind of thing that it's nice to, to know what's going on so we can actually...
Except in that particular case, the neighbors are talking about something that has nothing to do with that project. There was a survey done as a function of a completely different project in which the neighbors were, were communicated with as if called. There was surveys associated with the work, for instance, the Complete Streets Project, excuse me, Safe Foods School Project. Safe Foods School Project was communicated to you on multiple bases, and some of the activity of that group has left the neighbors the impression something is imminent in the middle school, and it's just not. And so, as it relates to the middle school project, I have given the board an update relative to the middle school project in the form of both an email and a communication.
But I think we should have it in an open meeting so we can at least talk and ask questions.
I agree, but we're just, we're at the point that there is, there is no middle school project other than a CPC application and dollars to fund an initial study. What's going to happen next as it relates to that project? And again, I think under the ask the manager piece, if there are pieces left hanging from the board that you feel like we haven't communicated, you want to bring to the public? We haven't included? Challenge me at those sessions. I, I'm just here to answer whatever questions in the public setting you'd like. As it relates to that project, there really is, there's nothing to report other than the fact that in the next couple of months, and I've said this at a meeting not so long ago, the committee will come back with a recommendation to form a broader committee, and then it gets handed off, which I think the selectman will be the appointing authority. It doesn't, there's no specific appointing authority, but I would recommend it's the selectmen. Appoint a committee of 11 to 13, which will implement this fairly large middle school project. What we were charged with was getting off dollars to give a rough idea of what the project could look like at scope. I have communicated that board in a public meeting and in the form of email. And then when that's done, that's a preliminary, very preliminary phase, then someone's going to have to carry the ball because, as I've said in public meetings, that's between three and seven or eight million dollars worth of work that's transformative to that area. And when that happens, that'll get turned over to the board, appoint a committee of an implementation committee, and put the right people on it to make sure that they continue to ask for the funding necessary to do it, and because it's that significant a project. Again, it's been communicated.
I think, I, I hear what you're saying. I think what happens though is sometimes that we talk about these, these big projects and these capital projects, and we listen, and it's not, I'm not going to disagree with you that you haven't talked about this project, but then time goes by and all of a sudden it's there, it's just, just giving us the update.
And that's why I think we have...
So I think we're both saying the same thing. Your feelings, gee, I did my job while you're saying that. And we're saying, yeah, we get that, but gee, this has come up recently, can we, that's all, just keep us...
And I think that's why putting it on a regular agenda item, even if Ray, if you say, I've got to update this meeting, that's fine. But, and then maybe we can say, well, what about this, what about that?
We used to do it the first meeting of the month, we can do the same thing.
Okay. We haven't done it in a while.
I just want to make sure that we're, so we're talking facility plan primarily, because the fields thing is, some of these things are now, just to be separating, but we'll make sure we're combined on whatever.
Yeah, I think, I think we did major projects, like for instance, if we're, once we start the, my mind just blanked out.
That's very good.
The Schofield Mill project, that would be one of the projects we'd include because that's considered a major project.
It's just, yeah, whatever's going on in town so that when we get the call, we can at least say, oh yeah, this is blah, 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 or make a phone call and say, you know, Andrew, what's, what's going on on this street?
The assistance I would ask is this, from your perspective, we try to share, we communicate reasonably well, and there are times that because of day-to-day stuff, we don't often stop, or sometimes don't stop, and forget that you have day-to-day left still.
There you go, exactly.
And so it is, it is okay whether in this setting or in another way, you say, and sometimes you do, you know, gee, so forget where we are in this project. So we're more than happy to do the regular reminder, I think there's a lot of merit in that. It also helps us sometimes if, if you get the call, that you feel free to email, call, whatever it takes, or bring up in this setting of things that maybe we gave you, I'll never sit there and say, I already gave you that, I'm more than happy to answer again. But we make the assumption that when I send something once, I assume everybody has read thoroughly everything I've sent, which isn't fair, stem discern, and we could also use that kind of feedback if you feel that you need...
That's perfect.
We agree.
Very good.
So what do you think of gold building on...
I really don't care for the gold. I was really hoping for more brick or taupe or something, or colors that we, we seem to have in a building like this, in town hall, in a fire station.
Who's going to charge the washer and windows? Holy cow.
But we don't need to make that decision today, right?
You had that same question, I was going to say, you had that same question on the fire station.
It's really today, we need to make sure we're direct architectural.
When does it need to be made?
I think we have to wait for the, the, so the color palettes vary by the selected contractor. So you should start to, I think it would be helpful to give, you're looking at what is previously provided.
No, you brought the color, we went with you.
Well, we gave it out to you last time, but I bought extra copies again this time.
But in general, because if we do that in the middle of after contract design, it gets a little blurry, right? So what I'd suggest is, if you have a preference to be someplace, like in the red, I'd like you to take a few minutes to sort of give us some direction that way, and then we can start showing these images closer to that color. And what we're really talking about is, so they may vary slightly because a particular contractor uses a slightly different, you know, like two paints, one made by Bear, one made by, like this. So if you could give us some direction on the design and a general sense of color, understanding that they may be slightly different, that would be helpful. Then we'll stop showing the gold image.
Oh, I like the brick red.
So do I. I think I like the brick red, maybe have the window trims a different color, like a dark green, which I know sounds like Christmas, but it's actually a very pleasing...
Are those stainless right now, Ray? Sorry? Stainless or aluminum?
Well, that's, the front, the front page is the material that's going to be in the building. The front page that I, that is the material.
Right.
Or like the, the fire station, there's what, taupe and a brick color. I just saw a building up in Kenny Bunkport, Maine, that was a new, and it was, it was taupe and it was a brick red, and they literally had the window paints in a very dark green. It was very pleasing power of colors.
Just so there's no misunderstanding, remember, we cannot do brick.
No, I know.
We can do a brick red color.
Exactly. Not fire engine red, not orangey red, it's...
Looking at the first one, yeah.
Great, we find out whatever color would have the lowest energy cost in cars.
That's what I assumed.
The building heating up. Well, actually, because there's not, there is...
Either JLR or BBR.
Again, until, until a general contractor's...
Those ones in the middle, forget it. I like, I think I like the BBR, but...
Then you will know the specific color chart.
Unless it's too red, it's hard to tell on a...
It's difficult to see a printed piece, you know.
And this was, this color here was another part of the body of the building that I saw.
Well, if you're going to go to reds typically what you do, since we're going to get on colors, what you typically want to do is you look at the adjoining buildings both left and right, then most of the soffit material, that aluminum, which currently is brown to a, and I'm somewhat colorblind, so that brown is sort of the tan color in between, the gold here, you're, you're not going to do a strong contrasting color on that perimeter soffit area. It's going to likely be a white, because you don't want to get into the...
What do you mean by the soffit?
This top, the top area on your, in your packages, that, that top surround area?
There's really three different colors.
It's like a brownish color.
Right, there's a corner of the building, there's the trim around the windows, and then there's that top soffit that, as you said, are referring to as brown.
Is that what you were just saying?
No, I'm just saying generally, if you're going to go, so this was made, we'll, we'll take the red as a general sort of gist, and when a contractor, a specific contractor's hired, we'll look to see how they match red, match red with the other two surfaces that have to be covered.
Okay.
Okay? It may be sometimes when you go with red, I'm just leading off, that sometimes when you go with the red, that, that top soffit area sometimes commonly is white when you're dealing with red, because they don't want to go red-green or red, something that sort of jumps out. We want this building to generally blend back off the street a little bit.
You're right, and, and not show the dirt, I mean, the type of equipment going in and out of there. No, well, well, this is the point, it was a few doors down, we have the first postmaster general of the United States' house, a historic building.
But, but to the left, we have an ivory-stuffing wood shake that is red. To the right, we have a metal shed building that is red, and across the street, we have a 1970s construction that, that wasn't period at the time. It's beautiful, I mean, I love it there, and the condo structure, but it's all a sort of tan, uniform tan structure and traditional late 60s, early 70s construction. So we have to sort of look at this industrial, and I think you get that.
I do get it, I understand what you're saying.
And so we'll try, but we'll, we'll move toward the reds.
And with all due respect, and just for, you know, that building you referred to happens to be this color.
Which one?
This yellowish mustard color.
Oh, the postmaster.
The old postmaster house happens to be this color.
No, what I'm just saying is we just don't want this contemporary, big garage-type-looking building a few doors away. I know, but you can still try to tone it down with the right color.
We just can't create, we can't create too many of those lines, that's all.
And I understand the building next door is a Butler Building, which for those at home, that's a big metal...
Shed. Big metal shed.
And it used to be our town hall for a little while, and they were, great people own it, and they take good care of it and all of that, so...
So we would look for consent, other than the concept of right here, proceed. At this point, we've got planning and conservation approval. The ZBA was, was largely commenting on parking, raised work to address the parking issue so that it's no longer looking for any relief on parking, parking's been satisfied. But certainly it makes sense to go into that August 9th meeting with agreement by the selectmen that other than the color, the look will be this. And we'll try to change the prints of these that are not speaking.
All right, so we have a motion then.
I'll vote approval of this design pending the board and others picking the color combination and...
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Are we getting the garage doors painted or what?
We, we, we are doing so.
Or is it going to be done in phases? I have no problem with phases if that's what it requires.
I was telling you, John, Greg.
So in terms of establishing, what we're still on topic, but still in terms of establishing priorities, so we talked first about three primary priorities, right, as relates to this project. One was creating the space we talked about, we'll spend some time on that. Two was to provide a salt shed which really allowed us to meet the immediate demands. And three, and this isn't probably misorder because number two really, the charge in number two was, clean the damn site up. So beyond the aesthetics from the street, I, I think we all would agree that the general site condition is not ideal.
I agree.
And so, phase three here was to take some steps to make sure that the overall site, even when you went back from the curb, was better, that the way things appeared, when you get to the back of the building, it's complicated, but to clean up the site and take some steps, and Bruce has already begun to do that. And then everything is sort of additional to that. So we're going to paint the exterior to match this facade, whatever color that turns out to be, and then we have other priorities that are below that. There's some structural pieces to this that we had to address, make sure that the building can last longer. The building, the doors will either be painted or replaced, probably not replaced, but as The building, the doors will either be painted or replaced, probably not replaced, but as part of the exterior painting, paint the doors. There's two eve-type structures over the two-side entry doors that are sort of old with things that we wanna replace, those may be with aluminum or some other structure. So we're trying to make the building on the most visible sides, front and left from the street, aesthetically improved. When you get to the back of the building and the stream side, we're less sensitive to that. And we're trying to squeeze every dollar out to do that.
I know, but will those eventually get done?
The doors may not eventually be replaced because they operate.
They're functional, well, that's fine. Then just clean them up.
Yeah, yeah, no, they're functional. Yeah, of course. No, we're not, we, it's the kind of project where, given the cost of this kind of structure, we're not replacing things that don't need to be. We wanna make sure that the building stands look aesthetically more pleasing, the site's improved, and we address the soffit issue.
Okay.
Fair enough.
But you know me to be largely OCD.
And you talk very fast.
I do, but you know you want.
And I think you forget that you say all this stuff in one, and then we're taking it in, and then we don't talk about it for months. You know that I say.
We can help each other remind that, remind that.
All right, so we're gonna move on to licensing. We beat this course pretty badly. He's listening. We're gonna move to licensing. Do we have a motion to move into licensing?
Mr. Chairman, move to enter licensing.
Second. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your first role was licensing chair.
Yes, exciting.
A big night.
So we have on the agenda this evening two requests. The first is a request of Armand Jignovorian of St. Gregory Armenian Church for a one-day malt and wine license for the annual church picnic, which is scheduled for Sunday, September 11th, from noon until 6:00 P.M. I don't know if Armand is in the audience. I don't see anyone.
No, it happens all the time. More approvals.
Second.
Seems he has everything in order. Motion of Mr. Stewart, seconded by Selectmen Smedili. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None?
Motion to open public hearing.
Second. Motion by Selectmen Stewart, seconded by Selectmen Smedili to enter a public hearing. This evening, we have Hokkaido before us, Hokkaido Restaurant on Route 125. The public hearing has been opened. Just to clarify, only the board members, town council, and the license holder will be asking questions at this time. So I will read the notice. Someone laughs at me for the delay in opening it.
I have paper in my.
So Selectmen Valencourt, acting as chairman of the licensing commission, sent a letter to Mr. Yang Waning, manager of Hokkaido Restaurant at 1250 Osgood Street, dated June 17, 2016. The North Andover Licensing Commission hereby notifies you, Mr. Ning, and requests you to be present at a public hearing to be held on Monday, July 18, which is this evening, at the North Andover School Admin Building regarding an alleged violation of a restaurant license issued under Section 12 of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, to your restaurant, Hokkaido Restaurant. This violation relates to the alleged incident described in the attached incident report, which occurred at your establishment on June 12, 2016, at approximately 1:47 a.m. As stated in the report, the violation is pursuant to the Town of North Andover Alcoholic Beverage Regulation, Section B, four hours of operation, which states last call shall be at least one half hour prior to the licensee's closing hour, and all patrons must be off the premise by the closing hour. All tables and bars must be cleared of all glasses, bottles, and containers of alcoholic beverages within one half hour after closing hour. At this hearing, you have been given the right to have council present, may have witnesses testify on our behalf, and will be entitled to question witnesses as well. As a result of testimony to be given that night, the actions of the commission could result in a warning, suspension, revocation, or modification of your license. I'd like to first recognize Sergeant Susie, who I believe was the investigating officer. I'm sorry, Sergeant Stoudt, who was the officer who responded that evening. I'd like to invite him up to be read the oath. Have we already sworn all of the individual?
No.
No?
You promised to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth, so I'll have to go.
I do.
It seems fairly straightforward, I guess, an explanation of what happened that evening is probably good coming straight from you.
It was on June 12th at about 1:47 a.m. I was driving up 125 north near Hokkaido. They noticed a large amount of vehicles on the property, which is unusual at that time of night, because usually it's closed up, the lights are off, the lights are on, the bar, right? Went into the restaurant, to the front door, it was open. And I spoke with the general at the front desk, and looked in at the bar, and there's maybe 10, 12 people sitting at the bar with various drinks, including beer, and asked them, you know, it's supposed to be closed by 1:00. And so as well, we had last call 11:30, and I reminded him that I was there earlier for a liquor check at approximately, just a little bit after midnight. And he said, oh, no, I meant 12:30, is what it means, they usually close at 1:00. So some 45 minutes later after closing, that they were still operating the bar.
So you said a lot, 10 to 12 patrons or?
10 to 12 patrons, correct.
What happens? Can you give me detail? In that instance, is it just you cleared out the bar at that point?
Yeah, you're supposed to be closed, everyone's supposed to be off the bar, all the employees are supposed to be off the property. And he tended to that.
This doesn't happen all the time, does it? Just a split time?
No, no.
And just to be clear, so the actual closing time is 1:00 a.m., so last call should've been 12:30, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And you were there until 2:00.
And by 1:00, that's it.
And it should be gone unless, you know, unless they're cleaning or preparing for the next day, the table should be cleared, the bar should be cleared, and it should be gone.
And the door locked?
And the door locked.
Was the door not locked when you entered?
No.
Were there any employees who were?
Two employees, the bartender and.
No, but I mean, who are sitting there having a drink.
I don't know that, ma'am.
Any additional questions for Sergeant Stoudt?
So you do, you do this route often, so when Selectmen Stewart asks you, so this is not a regular occurrence? Will you be in here before?
2:00 in the morning, you always look for someone to talk to, so. It's usually anyone around. No, usually it's not, it's not a common occurrence. That's why I wanted to check.
So when you drive by on other occasions, is it the normal hours, they're closed?
Yes.
Doors?
Yes.
Do you do door checks anyway?
Yes, yes.
Even if it looks?
Not necessarily every night, but, you know.
Yeah, if the building looks like they're closed, you'll still go over and?
Randomly check buildings, check town hall, check this building.
No, I know, I've checked.
But in this case, you saw a number of cars.
A number of cars. The lights are on, I would think they're open for business, and normally they're closed.
So that prompted you.
Correct.
Yeah, right. Appreciate that.
And what was the response of the manager on site? Was there a manager on site?
It was, yes, there was a manager on site, and just didn't seem to find it to be a big deal. I told him, it's supposed to be closed, and then he went and immediately went and had everyone come out of the bar. And then I checked back, but about 10 minutes later, it was gone, lights were off.
Well, seeing it's a first offense, I think the warning would be the way to go. And let them, let them know that next time's a week to 15 days.
Do we, do we have any other, any other witnesses on behalf of the town here though?
Before we do that, yeah, we should.
Yeah, we have to close the hearing.
Yeah, of course.
You wanna give the.
The individuals the option of.
They want us to stipulate to the past.
Yes. Thank you, Sergeant. I'd like to, I don't assume there are any other witnesses on behalf of the town, so I'd like to move, give the opportunity to the license holder, if he or she is present. I mean, I don't know if there's anybody here from Hokkaido who either the bartenders are, if you wouldn't mind stepping forward, and the town clerk can redo your oath, give you your oath.
I just raise your hand, just, you promised to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth, so I'll.
Okay, be seated, please. Would you both mind introducing yourselves?
I'm the bar manager at Hokkaido Restaurant, and I was on duty the night that happened. And here we have Mr. Lee, he's the owner of the Hokkaido Restaurant.
And you both heard the reading of the notice, and of course, we see the notice you're here this evening. I know that Sergeant Stoudt has presented a report as well as has this evening. Do you dispute any of the facts that he's presented?
No.
No dispute?
I mean, it's my fault that I let that happen, like, you know, I was just wasn't aware of the time on that night, like, that happening, like, it was so late, you know. So, you know, as soon as he stepped in, like, he approached the owner and telling, like, everybody should be out at the time. So, you know, we, as most of the people left at the time.
How long have you been in business up there now?
Three years.
Wow. Three years.
Without any, as we've heard, without any.
And obviously you remember the history, because we talked to you when you came in here at first, and the history of that building before that, and the number of violations. But I know that has nothing to do with you, but it, you know.
No, I wasn't aware at the time, like, I was hired, like, a few months after they were open, so.
But you're aware of what time that you are supposed to call last call at 12:30?
Yes, yes. And, you know, since then, like, we've seen the violations, though, I've been keeping most of people, like, out, like, right before 1:15. Like, you know, sometime, what happened is after last call, like, at 1:00, you know, we give out water to people, like, you know, who want to.
But timeout, last call has to be 12:30.
Yes, exactly.
And you can't, you're saying you're asking people to leave by 1:15. By your license, you need to be closed up by 1:00.
They need to be gone.
Well, there was a couple issues that happened in my bar, I need to formally let you guys know that, like, the taxi service in the area is so slow that, like, we have people waiting for taxi, we have people waiting for ride, you know, like, half hour. I mean, sometime, we even call taxi for people, like, at 12:30. I mean, if they show up, like, 25 minutes later, that's a very good sign. Most of the time takes 40, 45 minutes, or even over hour.
So respect.
Then you need to call it an hour early.
No, but we call when the customer approaching to us, like, at last call, that, oh, I need a ride, can you call a taxi for us, you know, stuff like that.
But the thing is, they still have to be gone, so that you need to make an announcement earlier for last call. Those of you who will be calling a taxi, this building will be closed at 1:00.
Yes, I will do that in the future, like, sometime I let, when we're doing the cleanup, and so I let them sit around and wait for the ride to come.
But there's a, I mean, you're telling us right now that this is a regular occurrence, that this is something where, you know, you're as a.
So from that one, I would tell them to, you know, if they want to wait, they have to wait outside, or, you know.
Or do last call earlier. I mean, if you need that extra time to get rides there, then maybe your last call should be 12:00. And so that way, you've got everybody out the door by 1:00.
Well, yeah, we'll do a better job on that part.
Yeah, you have to.
You have to.
I've been trying to make progress, you know, in my behalf.
You have to. It can't be a try thing anymore. You have to. It's the law.
Okay.
It's your license, it's states.
See, if you come back again and say, well, you know, they didn't have their ride, I had to leave them there, that's not gonna bode well for you. You will probably, we will probably vote to shut you down for at least a few days. I mean, Selectmen Valencourt is right, that there's no excuse, unfortunately. You have to have people calling for their rides early. And I know that's problematic, they could come right away, and people might not wanna gee, I was hoping to get another half hour in, but it's, it's a problem. You cannot be open, they need to be exiting the building.
Last call is a signal to your patrons, for them to understand that that's when they should be considering actually leaving. And I think it's, I hope no business is watching, saying that we would ever discourage anybody calling a taxi, as opposed to having individuals get into a car. But you, as the manager, have to understand that that's, you're coming here telling us that this is a regular occurrence. I would think that there would've been a discussion, you know, how do we get around to this so that we're in compliance and our patrons remain safe? So I think that's what you're encountering right now, a frustrated board that, you know, once, given the history, and it's not your history, but given the history of that location, and we're excited that you've been largely compliant, but, I mean, I.
It's a good time to be testing, because at least the weather is warm. It's not in the middle of the winter, as you're telling people they need to exit in the cold.
And we applaud you for making that effort to call the taxis for the taxis and cars or whatever, Ubers, whatever, for the events. That's a nice service that you do, and make sure people get home safe. But, you know, if you have to start earlier, you have to start earlier because you need them, and if they gotta wait outside, then.
But having said that, if someone had a ride that left them there, and they are not fit to be driving, we don't want you to shoo them in their car and tell them to drive home either. If you need the assistance of the police, just call them, say, listen, we're trying to close, but we, we don't want you to do that either.
Sometimes we even drive people home ourselves, like, we have, both have done in the past.
I see.
Do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Do we hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our hearing is now closed.
Giving a, giving a past history, at times, the rest of France is usually a warning for these people. But let them know at the same time, if they have another, if they're in a certain amount of months, especially if they have it real soon, it could be anywhere from a week to three weeks, it's our discretion. But I can, I never remember, 11 years as licensing chairman, never given anything more than a warning on the first one, so.
And I would support that. I think this is a business that has been doing a good job up there, and they've been up there for three years and trying to work hard and establish themselves, and they offer a variety of menu items. And I think, you know, I think a warning, in my opinion, is sufficient at this point, and then, you know, let's hope we never see you back in front of us. You know, you follow the licensing rules and what stipulated on your license, we won't see you back. But I think, in my opinion, I agree with Selectmen Stewart of being warning. Warning would be the way I would recommend going forward.
Can I just add one thing, though? It's also too, you can't lock the doors and have your staff sitting at the bar drinking either, that's.
Yes, we understand that.
You understand that, okay.
I don't think.
That helps, that's a good, in your position right now.
Can I say that my disappointment is, I know that we have, we oftentimes focus on the underage serving. For me, this is disappointing, because, I mean, I'm sure employees are very cognizant of what time. I mean, I don't know many people who are working a shift like that who forget for 90 minutes that they're supposed to be going home. And to have 10 to 12 patrons there is not having, you know, a simple handful. And that's 10 to 12 patrons that you serve for an extra hour and 15 minutes. I mean, making money, which is great, we want our businesses to make money, but not every bar gets to do that. And so I hope that's not, I mean, I take it very seriously. I mean, I even take it more seriously than even, you know, the accidental serving, because I understand when people are busy, if you forget to check an ID. I understand that, and I don't know many people that forget and keep working for 90 minutes. So I'm gonna throw that out there, because that's what the excuse was that you just gave to us, that for 90 minutes, people continued to work after they should've gone home after midnight. So I would encourage you in the future to absolutely, I mean, I won't buck what really is, but a trend which is your first offense, there's a warning. But I don't view this as lax, I view this as one of the more serious things, because I think there's such a temptation to stay open and continue serving to make that extra money, which we, we don't want people breaking the rules to do that, and think that they're only just gonna have to come before us and get a warning, but still profit from that, that rule breaking. So, do I hear a motion?
Didn't turn.
Didn't, didn't, seconds.
Well, second, John's motion for a warning.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing any oppositions? We're officially giving a warning by the board of Selectmen, acting as licensing commissioners for the town.
And thank you, Sergeant, for being such a, being good.
And thank you, Joyce, for staying and swearing in. Gentlemen, thank you for coming, I mean, you don't feel like you have to stick around. And with that, that is all, that is on the agenda, as I listed page.
Thank you.
So do I hear a motion to move out of licensing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Selectmen Valencourt's motion, and Selectmen Smedili's second. All in favor of moving out of licensing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're back. We have nothing on the agenda for old business, nothing on the agenda for new business. Public comment. Joyce, anything? Joyce, anything to say? You're the only public in there. I think that's a no. Town managers report, ask the manager. Mr. Manager, any questions just come in?
Well, for four items that we're working on that we could form in the form of questions. First is that we're meeting with some folks to talk about the prospect of textile recycling. So having a company independently at no cost, off the ability to go house to house picking up textiles, which takes product out of a waste stream, there's a secondary market for textiles.
They used to call that bragging, I think.
We're close. No, you're close, but generally clothing, textiles, textiles.
Bit sheets, clothing.
On your own t-shirts.
They used to go in the-
And the painter's bin.
Painter's bin, yeah.
The, so there's more to follow in that, we're meeting with some folks to get a better understanding what it means to the community. Segue into that, trash contract is up next, August, September. We will begin the process of obtaining quotes and selecting a replacement trash contractor beginning next year, but we're going to start that process now so we can identify the new contractor early enough to begin a transition that'll lead to some discussions on how recycling will be handled, because the agreement we're recycling is a separate industry agreement. And so we've got to figure out how that's all going to work out.
Are we envisioning the same type of pickup? I mean, are we going to fight, are we going to fight to maintain single-stream weekly? Are we fighting to maintain single-stream weekly pickup?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, recycling or trash?
Well, yeah, trash is always single-stream.
Trash is true, it's one stream for trash. So the trash contract will look to align the service that we have today, be very similar. I wouldn't expect that to change. The recycling, again, is a little more complicated, because we have an agreement about doing that, and this, you know, we have questions about the long term, you know, how we're going to proceed. So that's a more complicated agreement or discussion. Solar was approved, or the planning board approved the solar project at Osgood. I previously communicated with you the general layout of what solar will look like around there. You know, there's an appeal period. I would expect that appeal period will come and go. And so I do fully expect that there'll be solar on the Osgood site, on or around the sides of the project that was, has come up before this board on several different occasions, about six megawatts.
So mainly on the roof then?
Not mainly on the roof, one-third on the roof, two-thirds along, primarily in the back of the building. So nothing, I always get this backwards, but as I'm looking at the building, my perspective is easy to look at the building. I'm looking at the building, nothing on the left side of the building, where there was about one-third of the total set of panels was originally proposed. The board's response was largely around the left, right, and then the carports have gone away. All surface mount panels at this point, so no carport canopies. The mouth on the roof has stayed largely the same. Most of the panels have moved. Some were behind now, almost all are behind, none on the left as you're looking at the building. But some on the right, about halfway back and further back. So the planning board has completed that, and I would expect that you're going to see that. They're under some sort of pressure to have to complete it by certain deadlines, to meet certain milestones, to get the kinds of rebates and other things that they're looking for. So I would expect that it's very possible you'll start to see solar panels within 60 to 90 days, and then the function fully operational by, you know, end of year, first of January. Two agreements are required for them to proceed, net metering credit agreement and a pilot agreement. Those will be approved, have to be approved by the board. So I haven't had conversations with them about those things, because we needed to get through the land use process, but I would expect that we'll begin to have discussions on both, not unlike we did a little bit with Brooks. I think I've identified that in several emails to the board in the past. And then I'll present to the board what I think is supportable, and the board will have to decide if it wants to proceed in that direction. Pilot agreements go on for long periods of time, so they exceed, you know, they need board approval, and the net metering credit deal is certainly more than the three years required under most contracts. So net metering credit will mean we're getting a discount on the electricity, a discount off our electricity bills. And the pilot agreement is a payment-to-lewis taxes agreement associated with the value of the project and getting a steady annual payment associated with that. But that's to come, and again, I think I've certainly brought that to the board's attention, but we're getting closer with it, that's going to be reality, close to reality on that. I met with the electrical aggregation folks today. We passed at a town meeting. They're putting together sort of a single sheet that outlines the next steps, and I'll be giving that to the board so you understand what the next steps are. The next step for the board will be to approve, I can't even remember what the name of the document is, but in essence says, "Okay, Tom Meeting, approve this, and we're going to start", and that document then gets sent off to the Commonwealth, who has a four- to six-month process to, I'm not quite sure what they do, that's part of the reason for the document. And then after that approval from the state, then there'll be a very elaborate communication process with residents. But the next step is for the board to approve, or send approval, that we're going to make the next step, and that is to apply to the Commonwealth to allow us to do the electric. So I'd expect that in the next, if not next meeting, the meeting after.
And that's all about putting a third-party individual in, so instead of National Grid, we're getting power from somewhere else, and so for anybody, like, for instance, myself, anybody with a third party already in place would not be switched.
It's, you know, I've heard stories all over the place. The standard rule of thumb has been if it depends upon what you agreed to when you entered, if you agreed to some kind of contract that either charges you for removing yourself from that particular relationship, if there's not an out clause, then you probably are where you are. We've heard stories that when we, when communities have aggregated, the aggregation company has been willing to make calls to individual suppliers to find out, to get those people out of their agreements. So I would go in with the assumption that if you've agreed to participate with an alternative supplier for three, four, five, six, seven years, you're probably not going to go to this, but there is some possibility that would be different. But there'll be, there'll be a postcard before a letter, before North End of a Cam stuff, before all kinds of notifications. And then continuing after the switchover, there'll be an ongoing point of contact and 1-800 number that you can call, not just National Grid or us, but call the company who's coordinating for us, that for us directly. So if there's a question, how come this is this way, or how come it's worked this way? They'll have a ready access even beyond the point of transition to the supplier.
So, but I think a message that should go out to the citizens of North Andover, the calls that you're getting daily from electric companies and deals is not disagreement.
No, that's not disagreement.
I'm getting three in four calls, you know.
It's possible that people watch town meeting and say, "Hey, since the town's doing this, maybe we'll start the call and we'll get some business."
Well, I've been getting plenty, so.
Thank you for very making this room feel very comfortable.
I turned down the AC difficulty. It didn't jump down the system, I bypassed.
Thank you, Ray.
As Joyce and Dawn remind me every day, it's all my fault.
Okay, anything else? I'm just coming in. In your packet, we have the fire report, the police report, and the opiate report.
Yep, and the reports coming from, the reports are being changed slightly by both of the new chiefs to sort of have the signature on them. I know that Chief Gray specifically is working for some modifications of the reports to provide data in a different fashion, and you'll start to see that in the reports.
Yeah, it's really helpful.
Yeah, it is.
And I think the open report is, if you're watching, looking at the open report, it's helpful to understand what's happening.
Both, all the reports are very comprehensive, and there's a lot of information.
Okay, our next meeting will be August 15th, 2016, at 7:00 P.M., right here in this building, in this room. John, do I have a motion?
Oh, move to adjourn.
For a second, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?